All right, it's six o'clock. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order of the Edgefield County Council of September the 5th, 2023 at six o'clock. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. We're going to start with the invocation led by Minister Aretha Eubanks, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
May you please bow your head for prayer. Dear Father God, we come before you right now, God, first and foremost, to say thank you, Lord. Thank you for allowing us to gather again once more time, God. I ask right now that you empower our county council, God, to fulfill the duties and tasks for which you've put upon them, God. Strengthen them and encourage them, God. Lord, I ask that you empower our community so that we all shall fall unto one accord as we shall follow our leaders, God. Trust that the words that have been put before them is what they will follow for our county, God. I ask that you grant us travel and grace so that once we leave this battle place, we shall return home with everything decent and in order. And for this, God, we will honor you. We will love you. And may truly the manifestation of who you are inside of each and every last one of us truly shine before each other. And for this, we will honor you forever. And in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right, good to see everybody tonight. Counsel, we're going to next move to the approval of the agenda. I will ask that we move the first item of new business, which is a resolution, to after the minutes, if that's okay with everybody, which we usually do. Are there any other changes to the agenda we need to take up? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as I've just presented it?
So moved.
Mr. Talbott makes the motions. There's a second.
Second.
Ms. Ireland, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the minutes from our August 8th, 2023 regular monthly meeting. Any comments or changes to the minutes from counsel? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
I'm going to say Dr. Kenyon, I believe, made the motion, and Mr. Moody, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move the first item of new business to this moment. And so this is the consideration of approval of Resolution 2123-1168, recognizing Dr. Murdis Walker Brightheart for her long and distinguished career in education. And I know that she is here tonight. And so counsel and people here, let me take a moment and read this resolution so everyone will know what it says. This is a resolution recognizing the accomplishments and works of Dr. Murdis Brightheart Walker. Whereas Edgefield County Council wishes to recognize those persons who have provided distinguished service to Edgefield County. And whereas Dr. Murdis Brightheart Walker began her service as an educator in 1977 as a first grade teacher at Johnston Primary. And whereas Dr. Walker's service in education encompassing seven counties as a teacher and administrator over a period of 46 years of continuous service has been exemplary. And whereas Dr. Walker began working on the concept of a science, technology, engineering, and mathematics STEM charter school in Edgefield County in 2013. And whereas Dr. Walker was instrumental in the formation of Bettis Preparatory Leadership Academy, serving as principal from 2018 to 2023. And whereas Dr. Walker has expressed her view that public education has been her mission field in South Carolina and especially in Edgefield County. And now therefore be it resolved by the Edgefield County Council in session duly assembled this fifth day of September 2023, that Dr. Murdis Brightheart Walker be honored for her dedication and tireless service to the citizens of Edgefield County adopted this fifth day of September 2023. Counsel, you've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Dr. Kenyon makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And Ms. Ireland, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. So congratulations first to... We're going to come down there and ask you to come up here so we can get a picture. That's all right? comments from the public. I'll ask our clerk, did anyone sign up for the first public comment section?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then counsel, since no one has signed up, I'll close the first public comment period and move to reports. Counselors, any questions or comments about reports? Hearing none, I'll move to the public hearing. We have a public hearing on ordinance number 2123-799 to modify Sections 3, 4, 13, 14, 15, and 18. Sorry about that. This is a public hearing to modify Sections 3, 4, 13, 14, 15, and 18 of the fire services contract. Is there anyone here to speak on that ordinance in this public hearing? Okay, hearing none, counsel, then I will close that public hearing and move to old business. And number one on the old business is the same ordinance. This is the consideration of approval of second reading of ordinance 2123-799 to modify Sections 3, 4, 13, 14, 15, and 18 of the fire services contract. I'll ask the administrator first, is there anything new we need to consider tonight?
There is no new information.
Okay. All right, counsel, any questions or comments about this ordinance? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to give second reading to ordinance number 2123-799?
So moved.
And let's see, Mr. Moody makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Talbott, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we go to new business, and we've already done number one under new business. We'll move to number two. This is the consideration of approval of the tax millage rate for 2023, 2024. And as usual, every year, we have the county auditor, Bill Gilchrist, here to walk us through this. So, Mr. Gilchrist, we'll turn it over to you.
Hi, everybody, this evening. We're going to start out with, obviously, the tax base for '23, 2023. Obviously, this year, looks like the value of a mill at this point from last year is just a little bit up over 7%, which is probably the biggest gain in many years. And I think that's probably going to continue. Obviously, most of that is real property, which is evident. Vehicles, utilities are starting to make big strides. And obviously, that comes with the residential growth. Hopefully, there's going to be more commercial growth on the horizon. And that's what we need. But anyway, just a little bit over 7% going in. So hopefully, when we get to June 30th next year, it'll be more than 7%. So everything's moving right along. And that new value is obviously $100,750. So things are moving right along. I want to get into the, basically, a couple of things. We had a couple of new investments this year with manufacturers that were finalized last year that were not fee in lieu of. That probably sounds like crazy talk to you with the agreements that y'all have dealt with for the last several years. And the reason being for that, state law passed three years ago, basically entitles current manufacturers a break as their values come in every year, obviously shifting to a reimbursement column that comes back to the county and puts the state under more of a level playing field with the current manufacturing base in this county and the whole state. So that's huge because it kind of gets manufacturers looking at just doing a regular manufacturing return instead of a fee in lieu of agreement, just weighing the pros and the cons. In any event, that added to the tax base, or is going to add to the tax base this year too, with two of the current plants being Paktail and Southernvale. So there were no new fees that came on this year, fee in lieu of, I'm talking about now. Obviously, we had a little increase in the investment with Aiken Co-op with fiber optic lines, serving all the unserved areas, probably with the internet, which is huge for the county. That will continue on too. Just a little bit about fee in lieu of now, this year, that's probably going to pump about $300,000 into the county's budget, and basically, which is huge. And obviously, the rest of the tax base. And I was looking at some things a minute ago where I got a layout from the state a few weeks ago. And you know, a few people that you talk to, and they say, well, Bill, not everybody, but they say, you know, the county's got Generac down here. Well, they're just going to stay here 20 years, and then they're going to leave when their all their tax incentives. I said, no, that's not the case. You know, obviously, they are incentives. So basically, what I did, I compiled a number that basically this year, the whole tax base will be receiving about $1.2 million plus in fee in lieu of payments. That's county, schools, town of Trenton, where it applies. And if these agreements, and probably 40% of the agreement of the returns were not in place, obviously, it would be about $2 million to the whole tax base. But we all know the answer to that. That's in place, you don't get them. So, you know, a lot of people don't realize that the first full year on tap has a fee in lieu of agreement. Once your investment finishes last year, you come on to tax rolls this year. But then you get into the infrastructure credits, which is the difference. So, and then obviously, the biggest thing is the jobs. So, and that seems, I think, all manufacturers right now are doing pretty well. Things are moving, moving right along. So, let's see. Before I get into the millage rates, road usually started back this past January, after being gone for 12 months. To this point, collections are about $550,000. They get to December 31st, probably going to be around $800,000. So, you know, obviously, that came, was on, came off, went back home. So, that'll catch up. And obviously, with the residential growth, comes vehicle growth, which gets into the fee. So, things are moving right along with that. So with the millage rates, counsel be voting tonight, there is no change on the total county millage rate of 108.49, but the county's debt service millage rate has been 4.36. So with their payments that are due this year and what they have in basically, you know, in escrow or in a side account, counsel is going to decide it's best to come down on that millage rate a little bit and pump a little bit into a couple of entities that need to help, based on what I've been talking to David about. So really, going into tonight, the millage is 4.36. For debt service, that will drop to 2.06. EMS will pick up basically 1.3 meals of that, and the fire district will pick up one meal. But there is no change on the total county millage rate. All you're doing is shifting, what you're going to be voting on is going to be shifting that. And I know that, you know, the fire departments and EMS, and I mean, the way things are just rolling along now, and I had no idea. David told me what a new EMS ambulance cost fully loaded. I couldn't believe that. About what I make a year, you know?
[laughing]
But anyway, I know that's, that's huge for, you know, the EMS area and the fire departments too. So that's really about all I've got unless, you know, y'all got some questions about that, about what I've gone over.
The millage rate increase of about 7, not millage rate, but the return, about 7% increase of what the value of a mill, right?
Yes, sir.
I would think in South Carolina, there'd be a lot of counties envious of that number.
I think so. You know, sticking it to any other local counties, but I look at things a little different way. In the last 25 or 30 years, South Aiken is what it is. Aiken, Northside. But the last 15 years behind USC Aiken, all the way down to Graniteville, all the way up to Highway 25 on the Skoggly Road, North Augusta, all the way over into Columbia County. And who's left? Edgefield County. So now, it's, it's hitting, it's probably unbelievable what's going on right now. And obviously, you'd like to see more growth in the commercial area. And I think maybe that may be coming, especially on Highway 25, where obviously, the zoning is in place in Edgefield County to support that. And I think it's pretty strict. So hopefully, you know, some businesses can get over the hurdles because the homes are definitely coming, you know? And so I think, yeah, I think there are some smaller counties. But I think the growth is everywhere in the state. And what's so different to me about this is that this state right now, the way it's growing, and then you've got inflation. You know, it's just kind of weird what's going on now. And people obviously leave other areas of the country for different reasons, political, weather, whatever, you know? But in any way, and also, as David can tell you, with this growth away from the tax bills, the state money that comes in, it plugs right into y'all's budget, like the towns as well, that money's growing. Last couple of years, you can see a steady growth. And that's, inflation's got a lot to do with that as well as growth. But, you know, in inflation, everybody's struggling with that now, but in some areas, it just doesn't seem to be getting in the way, which is my opinion. But anyway, but yeah, some counties are very envious of us right now because it is really japping around. Sure is.
Other questions or comments from counsel?
Bill, I don't have no question, but I definitely appreciate the work you all doing. You're doing an outstanding job, and we definitely appreciate that you and the staff for working on it.
Appreciate that. I mean, the pay raise coming?
[laughing]
Yeah, we appreciate it, counsel. I know the girls in the office talked about a few weeks ago about what counsel did, what a couple of months ago, in feeding all the county employees and everybody who works for the county, elected officials and first responders, and, you know, what you did back at the end of last year. And one, a couple of years ago was better when they handed out the envelope.
[laughing]
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
I'll ask the administrators, anything else we need to hear about this one before we take any vote?
I think Bill explained the debt service change very well, but I do want to reemphasize that the 4.36 in debt service will take 1.3, add it to EMS, one mill, add it to fire. That results in 2.06. Those add back up to 4.36. So there's no increase in taxes there. It's simply a reallocation. That's all.
So the average citizen will not even see a tax increase because there is none. We're just sort of moving millage around, right?
That's correct.
All right, anything else from counsel? Hearing none. Is there a motion that we approve the, I guess the right way to say this then would be the millage rates, as we've discussed them? Okay. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
All right, Ms. Ireland makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And Mr. Talbott, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Let's see, next, counsel, is the consideration of approval to allocate $11,666 to the town of Edgefield from the American Rescue Plan funds under our town grant program offered, excuse me, approved by counsel in 2021. I'll get, I'll ask the administrator if he'd like to explain this one, please.
Yes, out of our American Rescue Grant, Rescue Program funds, counsel allocated $500,000 to be distributed to the three towns equally so that they could offer matching grant programs for things that might happen within their town. And for also improvements to properties. Well, that results in $166,666 allocated to each town. The town of Edgefield previously requested $155,000. That leaves $11,666. They want to use this money for their business for side improvement program, which they've used some money for previously. Staff recommends approval of this request.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from counsel? Hearing none.
I do have one question. Can we ask the mayor, because I see he's here. How many businesses have taken advantage of this so far?
Well, I can't ask that. But I've got a circuit. You can see the changes uptown.
We see them.
And I know they just approved three more, and we've got four in the pot right now.
So this will just go to helping more be able to apply and use it?
We put $75,000 of the original money we asked for, we matched it to $75,000. Of course, each grant is up to $22,000. So we've gone through the...
Gotcha.
And with this additional money, I made for the $0.75 after the...
But everybody who's needed it has gotten some. You would say it's been equally, and feel like everybody's had a chance.
Everybody's been turned out.
Gotcha. Sounds good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from counsel? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the additional $11,666 to the town of Edgefield?
So moved.
Dr. Kenyon makes the motion, I think. Mr. Moody, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next, on the agenda is a very similar item. This is consideration of approval to allocate $16,666 to the town of Johnston from the American Rescue Plan funds under the town grant program approved by counsel in 2021. So again, I'll ask the administrator if he'd like to give us an explanation of this one, please.
Just as with the previous item, the town of Johnston is requesting their balance of their one-third. That amount would be $16,666. They have already received $150,000. And this is for improvements to a building that they have downtown. And staff recommends approving this allocation. Thank you.
And it looks to me like what we're saying is, even though the town of Edgefield and town of Johnston have two different numbers, it's because they've gotten, Edgefield got more money earlier, and this just makes it all even at the end.
That's correct.
Okay. Questions or comments from counsel?
This is where their library is, correct?
Yes.
And they're going to do something else within the warehouse?
They're renovating the warehouse. There are no more questions or comments from counsel? Is there a motion to approve the $16,666 to town of Johnston?
So moved.
All right, Ms. Ireland makes the motion, and I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next, on the agenda is consideration of approval to utilize the federal government, excuse me, General Services Administration per diem standard rate for meals and mileage for travel expenses. I'm going to ask the administrator, of course, to walk us through some of these details, please.
So Edgefield County has not adjusted their per diem travel rates for meals in a very long time. This is utilized when an employee is sent to training. Oftentimes, they're sent to a part of the state, maybe Columbia or Greenville or Charleston, and they have to purchase their meals while they're there on training. They get reimbursed for that. As staff was recognizing the need to update these rates, we discovered that the Federal General Services Administration develops rates for each state. So South Carolina's rate would not be the same as California's. It's based on the cost of meals and so forth. We further recognize that about half the counties surveyed already index their rates to the General Services Administration. And the reason they do this is because it's updated every October. So you don't have a situation where you set the rates, and then 20 years goes by, and you're thinking, oh, goodness, we need to do this again. Every year, you would search the general services site. You would post the new rates on the travel training form. And of course, the IRS fuel rates are posted every year as well. So staff recommends that counsel approve, going forward, indexing our travel training per diem rates to the federal rate. That's all.
All right. Questions or comments from counsel? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve utilizing the Federal General Services Administration per diem standard rate for meals and mileage for travel expenses?
So moved.
Mr. Talbott makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Moody, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. And the last piece of new business is consideration of approval to permit the county administrator, the county attorney to negotiate a contract to purchase two parcels. Listed there is the numbers totaling 15.59 acres for the preset rate of $15,000 based on the industrial park development agreement amended in 2019. Again, I'll ask our administrator to help us with some details here.
Thank you. Counsel approved funding during budget approval, utilizing our American Rescue Plan funds to purchase this property, the 15.49 acres at the industrial park. This sale price is set by the industrial park agreement. This agreement travels with the deed for the property still available out there. The new owner is now objecting to the sale and the agreement, but the county will take action to ensure that the agreement and the pricing are honored if approved by counsel. By this vote, we're asking counsel to authorize the administrator and the county attorney to negotiate and or pursue legal means to ensure that this purchase may proceed. That's all.
Okay. I will say that, if you heard what the administrator said, that this is a legally binding agreement that the landowner has decided not to honor. And I'm deeply disappointed in the landowner, and we've had this agreement in place for almost 25 years. So just going to say it like that. Any questions or comments from counsel? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to permit the county administrator and county attorney to negotiate a contract for these two parcels that we've talked about?
So moved.
Mr. Talbott makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ireland, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to the second public comment period. And if we have people signed up, and it looks like we do, I'll remind you that you have five minutes to speak, and the clerk will notify you when you hit it four minutes and five minutes if necessary. So our only person who signed up was John Hudson. I'll call him, Mr. Hudson, if you'd like to come up.
We're all in this together, so I hope I can be a positive in all of this. But what made this country great was adversity, and that's what's going to keep it going forward. My issues is what I've spoke of before, the land issues in this county. I can believe we can take this place instead of rape it, we still can bring it together. But y'all are going to have to take the bull by the horns. They already in my area, causing washing and erosion, and don't have a clue and don't care to fix it. And it's being told that the county has no authority because we don't have zoning. But I understand you, counsel, voted that we cannot develop under 2.5 acres, which that's what most of this county wants. We don't want to be raped in here and let the builders and contractors take all the money, and then we pay tax... take all the money, and then we pay tax money again 20 years from now to fix the problem. I saw that in Augusta. That's why I'm asking y'all, you got to be bold. You're not going to make friends making the right decisions, okay? It destroys churches when people stand up and tell the truth. What has happened in this country? The truth is fell to the street. Nobody wants to pick it up. We got to be bold and be strong. Now, this song and dance about whether we don't have zoning and this, the law is the law. If it's 2.5 acres, why are we doing this? And then there's loopholes and this. I mean, it's assured. We looking at it from out here. It's common sense, you know, and I know I'm not knowing all the details. But it's, and then you got advice from counsel. I love lawyers because they're very represented in the Bible. Jesus loved them really dearly. And, but one man don't know everything because the Bible says we all know in part. So maybe a bunch of lawyers can guide you and direct you, but you shouldn't listen to them. You need to listen. The world would tell me I'm wrong in this. You need to listen to your conscience, the Holy Spirit. You do what's right as a person, and God will take care of the business. If not, we going over the bits just like this federal government is, and they trying to take over counties and everything. So you have to be bold or be honest with you. I had to yell straight down my back for 40 years, but not no more. I'm going to do like Paul. I'm going to die for standing for the truth, and I want to be known, and I want to be ashamed of myself. So represent your people and be bold, and don't back down and don't back up. Because I know they buying us off. I know in this county, I wouldn't doubt y'all not already having the train. When the federal money, government gives you money, you got to do equity and pronouns and everything else and transgender bathrooms. The day is here. You got to decide who you're going to serve. And that's all of us, not just you, okay? We in this together. But if we fall together, we staying together either way. So I'm asking y'all, please, all this, you know, you take counsel, but take a chance. Do what you know is right in your heart. Lawyers don't know everything, and they haven't done too good for us representing us in this country. They come up with all these laws so they can control us. And so we don't need to be controlled no more, guys. Amen? And so we, I'm going to give Tiffany, she's represented in my area, some things that can help in bringing this erosion and people just doing what they want. Y'all got to take control of it. But please, don't sit here and, I mean, Doc Isit can give me permits and license fees on electrical and all that, but he can't regulate the dirt. He can't do this. Well, I don't understand why he can't. And so there's some things y'all need to work through and use some common sense, because we don't have to wait to de-hack. De-hack's falling all apart. I'm in trouble with them, when I'm not in trouble. They's telling me two months before they can come do a septic tank test for me. So you got to pay money and all this. This county, I said it before, you need to have your own land surveying engineer and do all this for ourselves. You're going to have to bite the bullet sooner or later. I'd rather you go ahead and take that bull by the horn now and get a hold of it instead of us paying down the road when y'all all gone and pay more taxes. Millions of dollars of what Augusta had to do, rebuilt detention ponds and everything to get everything out of control after the developers and builders, really hate to say, took advantage of us and walked away. Please, take this bull by the horn.
Thank you. All right, counsel, no one else signed up for the public comment period, so I will close that and move to reports from county councils. Does anybody on county council have any report to make tonight?
I do. I have, I'm going to make a report on behalf of me and Dr. Kenyon. We serve, well, we are the liaisons with the broadband, as y'all know. So we wanted to bring a little update today. I was able to speak with Gary Stukesbury, the CEO of Aiken Co-op, and he has some really good news to share. He said that we will be done with all of the underserved and no-service customers by the end of December. And so if y'all remember, they were projecting this to go into 2024. So we are, we are ahead of schedule. We are excited about that. And kudos, great job. They had, they had doubled their workforce. They've cut it back down to more of a normal point now. Where they are currently, they are working on two substations. One is at West County Line, and the other is at County Line. At West County Line, they are splicing now, which is the last thing that happens before it goes live. So they are expecting this area to be open for marketing sometime in October. So people that live in this area can expect to start hearing something. They'll get their emails if they've gone online and notified that they want to be aware of this. They'll get their emails. Hey, we're ready. Sign up for your plan. That'll be coming in October. For County Line, all of the fiber is hung, and all of the underground work is done. They're just waiting on the splicers to move into that area now. And once they are moved in, then they'll finish up the splicing. They expect that it to be open for market a month or so after West County Line. So that's where they are. Mr. Stukesbury also said that they have applied, Aiken Co-op has applied for grants to see how they can also help, if possible, service other areas in the county. We've all talked about that, how they might help Dominion customers as well. And he doesn't have any word yet on the grants they've applied for. They're waiting to hear. So I expect we will hear something, maybe toward the end of the year when they start awarding some grants. And the other thing I'd like to talk about really quickly, again, Dr. Kenyon and I kind of overlap here, is recreation. I want to speak first, I'm going to speak about soccer. I just want you guys to know. And we talked about recreation as one of our top priorities here on counsel. Mr. Hudson here, again, donated tens of thousands worth of equipment to get the field. And the mayor knows it's looking great out there at Edgefield Complex. We are so excited. This season may be our biggest season ever. We have 149 children playing soccer this season. We're so excited. That's wonderful to be able to service those. But I think this is just a testament to the growth that Mr. Gilchrist spoke about. It's coming. We're seeing that in our rec. We're going to have to address this. So just to put you on notice, we're, you know, these are things, these are growing pains. These are good growing pains. This is good to have. I'm so excited to have all these kids out there. Y'all know this is my little passion here. But I think Dr. Kenyon has some news about cheerleading and football.
As many of you may or may not know, I'm over, I'm not over. I'm part of the Recreation Department. Bess Academy, again, I agree, is growing. We have 102 football players. We're full of, full of energy, ready to let it go. We have 102 football players and 80 cheerleaders. We never, ever had over 30 to 40 cheerleaders. We have 80. And on October the 16th, they'll be at Strong Thurman, ready to run the field. That's the night we play against Haluta. We ask everyone to come out and support them. They won't cheer or nor will they play, but they want to be recognized. So they used to be recognized. So now we're going to bring that back into play where they can be recognized. A couple of people, a couple of parents from, I think that place called Governor, down Highway 25. They asked about the Recreation Department. One young fellow, I think he's a fifth grader, and then the other one is a second grader. And first thing they asked about was football. But the young fellow, the baby boy, wants to play soccer. And I think he just moved in. And so they're going to probably be too late for soccer and too late for football. But anyway, we'll get them next year. Mr. Gilchrist did state it, growth is growing. Highway 25, that District Four, that's where I see a lot of growth, especially with the industry. Bonded was just added on, and I know that jumping is such. But the, but District Four is really, really growing. I'm going to jump the gun for a minute. I will be having my first community awareness meeting this coming Saturday in Macedona Baptist Church. That would be the ninth of September from 11 to 12:30. And on that program, I will have the Chad. I will have Tucker Miller, but Tucker is over the Aiken Electric Corp., what Tiffany was just discussing. Even though he will be there, he have someone that he wants to speak a little above him that know more about Wi-Fi. District Four, majority of District Four is on that Dominion energy. They want to know how they can get connected. Because we have so many students that is not going to college, but attend college online, but the Wi-Fi is killing them. So they are all excited. And a majority of the parents, some of the parents I talked to, they wants to really talk to the guy, which his name are Marshall Myers. Then I have my very own backup plan. Our administrative David, my backup plan. So the question that I may cannot, I may cannot answer, cannot answer, my backup, my right hand, will be there. This is our first one. I invite everyone, what I'm targeting, District Four. So I want to repeat that. I invite everyone, what I'm targeting, District Four. Thank you.
And one more quick thing about recreation. I just wanted to point, Nick would be upset if I didn't say. Softball started a spring, a fall league for the first time this season. And their numbers are matching what they typically see in the spring. So these children, someone asked me the other day where all these kids coming from. And it's, we're starting to see the growth. I don't know if they've just always been here, and then they're just coming out of the woodwork, or if it is the families that are, but we are having an influx of children into our programs. 80 cheerleaders, that's a lot of cheerleaders. And they're out on the soccer field doing cheers, too. I'm just going to tell y'all. Y'all want to see them out there. They're practicing on the soccer field tonight. But thank y'all for your commitment to rec, and we're excited where we're going with this.
Thank you, Dr. Kenyon and Ms. Ireland. Any other reports tonight? All right, I can't chop 80 cheerleaders, so. We'll go to the county administrator then for his report.
So I'm very happy to report that we finally have a new Veterans Affairs Director. His name is Dwayne Tager. He started last Monday. This is such an important position, and we encourage veterans to touch base with Dwayne as needed for benefits assistance. And I encourage counsel, if you know a veteran that's having difficulty with benefits or you think could benefit from this, that you send him to Dwayne. He's located over in the Ag Building on Gray Street. The animal care and control facility is going strong. Most of the kennels are being utilized. I can tell you that the staff is excellent. They're providing great care. I was just meeting with the sheriff on this, and we agreed that after about three months of operation, then we'll sort of deconstruct what's happening and see if we need to revisit any assumptions, any fees, any policies. This is all new to us, but it's having a great start. And I commend the sheriff and his team and all the staff out there for working so hard to get it going, long overdue. The law enforcement center is about 35% complete and on schedule. The sheriff is going through the process with two different groups to identify the required staffing for the detention center. And he's also exploring ways further down the road to help fund that. To echo what Tiffany and Jackie, Dr. Kenyon and Councilwoman Ireland, said about recreation. Recreation is so important, and it ties in to everything we do here. If you want to, if you want to come live in a place to work, you need a place to play. I mean, it's so important. And we see the aftereffect of people moving into the area in that people are signing up for teams. But that's also a lure to bring families to our community. And it's, it's a lure to keep members of families from moving away as they grow up, because many will remain in the community if there are things for them to do. So that was part of our strategic plan to improve recreation in our county. On that note, the Boy Scout Hut has a new roof. Most of the concrete floor has been replaced, and this project is about 50% complete. It will be able to be used for indoor recreation, for various classes, for youth, and for older adults as well. Counsel authorized us to acquire quotes for playground equipment, which we're doing, and for a shelter. And we're doing that as well. In addition, we spoke last month about there being an appropriation made by the state, an earmark for Bettis Park, $800,000. So the money has not been received yet, so we are setting the stage for being able to complete the work there. Our Roads and Bridges Department demolished the old bleachers and fencing on the baseball field that we're going to repair. A new scoreboard has been ordered for the football field. We're soliciting bids now for chain link fencing and baseball infield reconstruction. We've identified playground equipment to purchase under state contract. We've got favorable pricing on that. So we're excited about improving that part for that area of the county. And that amount of money will make a great difference there. It'll be really nice. The last thing I want to add is that we are undergoing a website redesign, and the purpose is to provide updated information, but to also make it user-friendly. And a thing that's very important to me is to provide clear contact information for every department, so you're not in an endless feedback loop of being connected to different people that can't help you. So we're going to improve that quickly. That's all I have.
Thank you. Questions or comments from counsel for the administrator? Okay, hearing none. Thank you. Then we'll move to the chairman's comments. We've been in this meeting now less than 50 minutes. So sometimes county council has a fairly quick meeting since the agenda doesn't go on for pages, and I know that everyone is thankful for that. However, I want to point out that many of the items we addressed tonight really speak to the future of Edgefield County. From the economic development to recreation, to the fire contract, to helping our towns, are the kinds of actions our citizens asked us to pursue with vigor. Also want to point out that others have as well, that many of the items we covered here tonight can also be traced to our strategic plan, which we finalized earlier this year. My message is that we continue to be on the right path for the future of Edgefield County, and I'm very appreciative of those who are making that happen. Counsel, that's all I have. Since there's no other business to conduct, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Ireland makes the motion. Dr. Kenyon seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
How fast can you say all that?